Good evening. We welcome you here tonight to the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. We note that we have six council members participating in our meeting tonight. Councilmember Fitissi Manu is excused tonight. With that, as is our tradition, we will begin with the inside the video, or excuse me, inside the city videos. And we have those every, the beginning of each meeting, and so we have one tonight.
We're here doing some EMS fire training today for trauma. This particular scenario was an instance where a potential industrial accident occurred inside of an elevator shaft. Patient was critically ill or injured down at the bottom of the hole. This required fire departments to actually perform a scene size up, initial identification of overall problems, a strategy to safely mitigate and also extract the patient from the bottom of the hole.
We got, we got everything locked out, tagged out.
Challenges is, we're working in a very confined space. We have to go down into that environment. It's hot. It's very difficult to work. You can't get a lot of bodies down there to help move the patient, work on the patient. And then even getting them up and out of a hole is a difficult challenge as well.
Your initial contact is this individual. You're extremely concerned. He looks critically ill and injured. You're noticing that his chest rises and falls, but his respir-
This provides us the opportunity to try and practice it in a scenario that is safe and as well as a controlled environment. Because there's always risk in any type of medical procedure. When you combine a rescue with essentially unfortunately sharp objects, last thing we're gonna do is get like that. So this is a reasonable way to get people some experience, as well as to do it in a safe, comfortable environment.
It's important because there are plenty of confined spaces throughout our city. It could happen anytime, anywhere. And you know, everywhere we go on a call, especially a trauma call, it's not going to be a perfect environment for us to operate. So putting us in difficult situations makes us prepared. I thought we did great. You know, it's a great learning experience. You make mistakes, you make success, and learn from the mistakes and help to do good in real life situations. All right, so working, breathing, still laboring.
Okay?
This was actually really, really fun. This was a fun thing to put on. Everybody's really indicated that they've had a good time doing it. Training like this, especially for fire and EMS personnel, or hands-on as well as lectures, so we can engage all the senses in providing care and services.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we just need to approve our minutes from our last meeting of July 20th. If they're all correct. I move to approve those minutes. Second, properly before us, hearing no further comments. Looks like they're good the way they are. With that then, without objection, we will consider the minutes approved. Hearing no objection. The minutes are approved unanimously. We use that method when we have part of our council and we have at least one member who is not physically present. We are using a combined feature of both being here present with the pandemic, we think winding down. And, but we are still offering that option to participate electronically. By the way, we also offer the public that same situation as well. They can participate electronically. But they do need to work it out before the meeting starts. A little bit ahead of time to make sure they know how to get into our meeting. With that then, we have a proclamation. And we will turn to Councilman Christensen for our Neighborhood Nights Month.
Thank you, Mayor. A proclamation declaring August as Neighborhood Nights Month and August 3rd, 2021 as National Night Out 2021 in West Valley City. Whereas West Valley City strives to reinforce the importance of crime prevention, awareness in the city, and whereas crime prevention events have been planned throughout the month of August, and the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 3rd, 2021 entitled National Night Out. And the 38th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for West Valley City to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts and police-community partnerships. Neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. And whereas the mayor and city council of West Valley City do hereby determine that it is essential that all citizens of West Valley City be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in West Valley City. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of West Valley City do hereby proclaim August as Neighborhood Nights Month and August 3rd, 2021 as National Night Out 2021 in West Valley City and encourage residents to participate in the various activities taking place throughout the city in the month of August.
Thank you. This is a tradition that we have held in West Valley City. Our National Night Out and Neighborhood Watch groups, we have many, typically over 40 different groups participate in that during the month of August. And the city has been doing this, ooh.
38 years.
38 years. So, 38th Annual Night Out, there it is. And so we encourage people to participate in that, getting to know their neighborhood and developing relationships to keep their neighborhoods even safer. Okay. With that then, we go to our public comment period. And we may have people who have not spoken in our meeting before here tonight. We remind you of a couple of things. We set aside a maximum of 30 minutes. A maximum of five minutes for any one individual. It is not a discussion, nor a debate, nor a question and answer. It is five minutes maximum to the individual speaking for them to say what they want. We ask you to be respectful. All comments are directed to the mayor. It is not to be personal to any particular member of the council or staff. And we have enjoyed great success by having respect during that time. And so we'll begin, first of all, I believe we have one person. Oh, yeah. And we do have a public comment period on an item on our agenda, which will follow this public comment period. We have two different things. Public comment, you can speak on anything you want. Then there's this hearing on a general plan change, some apartments on 3500 South. That is separate. But that is the only item that can be addressed during that portion of the public comment. And so we will do that separately. So the first one is just on whatever someone wants to bring up to our attention. With that then, we'll start with the individual who is electronically joining us.
Amir, our, the resident actually decided to come in person. So she is here to speak tonight instead of online.
She came instead, so, okay. So we don't have anyone else electronically. What about for the other public hearing?
No one electronically, sir.
Then we'll go to those who have signed up. Let's see. Is it Bert Forsyth? Maybe I pronounced it wrong, but it looks like something along that line. Okay, if not, Jim Vesock.
Yeah, the name was on the paper when I came in, so. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Markham last week talked about code enforcement. One of my favorite subjects. I am 100% for code enforcement. But I have also noticed that things aren't being done. On the West Valley app, which you guys know I've used, I have 51 times that I've used it. Anywhere from two weeks old with no response to 64 weeks old. Some of them I know have been fixed. But, and some of them are repeat offenders. I question what they're doing. I watched a code enforcement truck drive down my street where there are several violations and just drove right on through the neighborhood. There's a lot of inefficiency, I believe, in that department. And it starts at the top and unfortunately it filters down. The, changing the subject. The five-foot parking ordinance. It's been publicized, it's been put out, it's been put out with the water bill. Yet somebody's made the decision not to be enforced. And it wasn't this body. Mayor, you signed it into law, this, or into making it an ordinance. This body did not vote and say this ordinance should not be enforced, yet it is not being enforced. Nobody can tell me why. And who made the decision to do it? Because I know it wasn't this body, because I've been at all the meetings, so. Let's see. You guys are voting tonight, and I know it's a mute cause. $975,010 on cars. Yes, we need the cars. In two weeks though, as the new budget, none of these cars are going to be here before two weeks. This could, could be, and I believe should be, part of the budget. Not put at the end of it and then opened up. It's a, you know, and it affects the budget. Maybe someday that will change. National Night Out, I had somebody asking me about it last night. And FYI for the public and for everybody else, I talked to Craig. You can still get with him and get all the stuff that the city puts out. So, and still be part of National Night Out. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Vesock is a regular who comes to our council meetings most every week. And we're glad, because some nights he's the only one here. Is there anyone else who wants to participate in our public comment?
Yes. Yes. Okay, can I start? I thank you very much for this wonderful opportunity to express my concern to you today. This is the first time for me. I'm a little anxious, but also thrilled. I didn't know about this, so this is so wonderful. Well, what are the benefit of having park in a community? Well, there are so many studies have done. For example, resident can spend healthy lifestyle. We can build cohesive family and community. And in turn, property, our property values actually increase. To enjoy these benefit, parks should be well maintained and managed. That is the most important thing. However, Kings Point Park fails to provide such benefit to the resident because this park is crime-infested. For instance, two individuals were murdered at this park within four years. Independently, two shootings occurred as I am aware of. One was on Friday evening around 5:00 PM in 2019. And another one occurred on Saturday evening around 6:00 PM in 2020. Every year, under the bright sunlight, two shooting occurs. As such, we may not be able to benefit, we may not be able to enjoy the benefit I aforementioned. I owned and lived right across this park for over 25 years. On July 24th of this, approximately 1:00 AM, a bullet was shot through into my living room. If the gun was more powerful one, the bullet could have penetrated a wall and reached to our bedroom. Although there are more than eight lights available in the park, none of them were working at that time. After my husband's plea on the TV, he was on TV, to fix the light, the Department of Parks and Recreation quickly responded and fixed the lights today. I am so impressed with them. However, this is actually a minimum standard. Lights are there, it should be working. So, police has known that this park is one of the worst parks where the crimes have been committed. Gang members have memorialized this park because their friend was murdered there. So, they meet frequently, drinking, fighting, yelling, playing loud music in the middle of the night. And some cases, they are shooting, shooting some objects. They are not individual from our neighborhood. They come from somewhere in Salt Lake City and terrorizing our neighborhood. We have called police many times. And I want to emphasize, they did a wonderful job. They responded and they came, but they have limit. I understand that. I appreciate their office, the officers who do their job well. But these issues still, still remains the same. That means what we have been doing is not working. Therefore, I would like you to consider more tangible solutions. For instance, installing camera in the park, placing signs saying 24 hours video surveillance, 10 o'clock curfew, and so on. I'm actually representing some of my neighborhood today. And this is, we firmly believe. We believe if the city cannot manage the park well, we should close it down and build another subdivision. If it is the only solution, we are definitely, you know, up to it. And it might be good for police departments and also West Valley City. In order for us to have safe and lively community, we need your help. We really need your help. I love this diverse community. I even commute my work from here to Provo. But I would like to live here as long as I can. So I need your help. And thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity. I really, really am grateful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You did very, very well. Oh, let's see, did we get her name? Oh, okay. When she registered online. Is there anyone else to speak? We thought there might be a few more, but apparently not. With that then, we'll close the public comment portion. And I don't know, Mr. Wayne Piles online and our assistant city manager's here. Any comments, Mr. Pile?
I'm on, thanks Mayor, but no comments.
Okay, thank you. Council members, any comments?
Yes, I do, Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, recently we approved the budgets for the line, lining in our city. But what the status right there is how, how far did we go? We start yet? Or you, or can you, or the staff can we report back to us? And is anything going with that one? About that status? The second thing is about the loud noises, as I mentioned with you guys before, with the council members before, it's in all the area, but also in Chesterfield. I really want to see a police officer step up and. Another thing that people in my town, so they report back to me, it says 11 o'clock at night, 1:00 AM morning, race car in the Parkway Boulevard, very fast, like 100 miles an hour. And I get also receiving a call from 31 Resale, 480 West in District 3. Also saying something very similar to the car at night and bike. And we need to do something with that.
Think that was everything?
That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. We had a little bit of difficulty hearing you, Tom, so. But we'll get you back here one of these nights and follow up on that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Now we go to the next item on our agenda, which will be a public hearing in just a moment. This is on application GPZ-12-2021 filed by Marco Diaz on property at 4612 West 3500 South. And we will, in conjunction with that, consider ordinance 21-48 showing a general plan change. And ordinance 21-49 showing a zoning change. And so, let's see, this will be taking that piece of property. And I believe the plan is to build 10 units on it, located next to City Park there on 3500 South. And so, just think that's a general introduction with it. There can be as much more discussion as we would like. And so what I will do at this point, council members, anything you want to add before we open the general comments? Okay. Then what we will do is we will open this for public comments. We do not have anyone on electronically. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to this? Looks like we have several. So, would you like to go first, Mr. Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the council. This item went before the planning commission about a month ago. And, and the main concern was the fact that it was a small project, only 10 units. Normally, the concern I get is the opposite, that we were trying to build too many units and therefore we're trying to pare it down. So this was kind of a little bit of a different approach. But I wanted to take a few minutes to give you a little bit of history because I believe that in, in every city I've worked with, there's always that give and take. And I hope that we can find some common ground and some solution. And so I wanted to give a little bit of history today. When we first approached the city with regard to this property, we thought, as most developers do, we want to get as many units as we can, try to maximize our density. So we were trying to convert this, rezone it to, to a high density. And talking to Steve Pastrick, he, he kindly recommended that we probably don't do that because that was going to get some opposition. So after thinking about it, we, our initial proposal was a large for high density. And then we pared it down to medium density. And that's what we proposed today. But, so initially, we were going to try to get somewhere between 14 and 16 units. So we scaled that down to try to make it work and to try to make sure that we, knowing that, you know, there could be some challenges to this because Steve had mentioned that it had been rezoned a couple of years prior. So what we try to do is, whenever there are potential issues, we try to make sure that we don't have exceptions. Because normally in every, like I say, normally when we go before city councils, we, we develop some sort of a development plan to try to find some, some ways to mitigate some exceptions that we may have. In this case, we propose one plan. And do we have it up? Could we pull it, pull it up? I have a just, and I know you've seen this, but I, just a quick little overview. We had one plan that we proposed that was more of a subdivision. And the reason why we did it that way is because we thought it'd look more, less like a multifamily project and more like a subdivision. And you see it right, almost there. So it still was 10 units, but laid out in a way that we thought would be more appealing to the city. There you go, you see it there. More of a subdivision coin, it was like a little cul-de-sac, if you will. Obviously with fire turnarounds. But laid out in a way that we thought, as I said before, it would be more appealing. However, that required two, two exceptions, a setback exception. It was too close to the residents, to the north and to the west. And, and we didn't have enough green space. So after hearing the input from the planning commission, their study meeting, study session, we, if we can go, the two first slides are similar. They're just more detail. Because we put a lot of effort into that first one. But we were willing to revamp it completely to the third slide, if we can get to the third slide. And based on the feedback of the city, based on the input of the planning commission. Could we go to the next slide, please? We were able, we, and Steve was very instrumental in that as well. We put together this plan that instead of being 20 feet or 15 feet away from the west side, we are now 70 feet away from there. And therefore, a lot less disruptive to the neighbors. We, we felt like this would be a good, because, a plan because, one, it was further away, but second, it did not require any exceptions. We met not only all the requirements from the city, all the ordinances, but also met all the policies, as they say, they have some internal policies as well. So we felt pretty confident going into this. Now, the planning commission's concern, a member of the planning commission's concern was that small projects have a different, and small, therefore, a small HOAs, because this is a multifamily unit, have a more difficult time. Yeah, those two are similar. Have a difficult time surviving or making their budgets or what have you. So it wasn't, it wasn't the concern about the project itself or the quality of the project or the setbacks or the height or the- project or the setbacks or the height or the roof or any of that. It was that she felt that the small HOAs would have more difficulty. So I always believe that when there's an issue, we try to solve it. And if we could go to the next two slides, just a refresher, we think we're building a good quality product. However, we, we don't have any say after we turn it over to the HOA. So as I was thinking about how we can mitigate that concern that the planning commission had, the only concern, the only issue that I thought, which I presented to the city and they said it's a little unprecedented, I've never done this before as well, and the city has never encountered this, but I and my partners are willing to put in escrow some money, whether it be 5,000, 10,000, whatever the council feels fair, that in any case, if there is any shortfall at any point, hopefully, I've, like I've said in my email I sent to the council, I've managed small and large, as, you know, I've lived in several, grew as a student and then younger married couple, and managed some HOAs that have been large and small, and we've never had a shortfall, but it could happen. I don't doubt that at all. But if it does happen, the city would have monies and escrows to make sure that the quality of the product continues to be there and that any issues that arise as a result of mismanagement from an HOA can be covered by these funds. So I come to you before you, I guess the case I make is that this project, again, there's been no feedback or pushback, I guess, on its merits of the project itself, of the quality of the project or the, or meeting the ordinances or policy of the city. That is not in dispute. The concern is that these small projects can fail, and the only solution that I can see, even though I've never done this, and I guess the city has never done this as well, I'm willing to think outside the box and say, can we do something differently? And what we're proposing, my company is proposing that we set aside some monies, whatever, you know, not maybe whatever, but something fair that the city feels comfortable, that could mitigate any potential risk. Any questions from me or for me? Hearing that?
Not at this point. There was a gentleman in the back corner.
Darryl Curtis with the 3860 South Marcia Drive. The only concern I have with such a property as this is where I live is behind, right behind Smith's. It's in our neighborhood, Smith's on 41st South and 56 West, and that has a lot of town homes in there, and none of those town homes are owned by the individuals that live there. And as a neighborhood, we call it cocaine alley or crack alley. And so my concern is with something like this, maybe not in the next five years or 10 years, but eventually turn into something similar to that, I always applaud and I think it's important that people own their own property. So having a town home that people can purchase is very important. The concern is, will developer or some other individual or corporation buy up several of these town homes and then just turn it into rental property? And renters don't take care of their property as well as owners. If you don't believe me, just drive down Crack Alley, right there behind Smith's, and you can see how well things are taken care of. So the other situation with that property is parking. It's great that they will have a two-car garage, but in a lot of places, two cars is not enough. If people come to visit, where are they going to park? There's no parking that I can see from the drawings of where additional visitors will be able to park. If someone has three cars, where are they going to park? Is that, is the driveway big enough to hold additional cars? Because some, some garages turn into storage units, and then the parking is on the outside of the garage. So just for your consideration, if there's a way to keep it under so that it's privately owned by individuals, and I like the HOA prospect of it because that way is at least there's some buy-in and they would, some, I know a lot of HOAs can control some of that information, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Bissok?
As the former president of an HOA of 12 houses, now I own three of the properties, but the number one thing, issue that we had was when we're setting dues is leaving money for the roads because this is a private road, well, this is one of the two things that we had. And it was for such a small community, it was about $250 a year we were putting aside. And so they didn't have a big thing at the end. People didn't like that. When they saw we had $2,000 or $3,000 in their bank, they're like, oh, wait a minute, why don't we use that money for the maintenance, stuff like that? On this, it would only take a majority vote that show up to the meeting. It's not the majority of the people there, it's the ones that show up to the meetings. Parking, like Darryl said, we had no street parking. It was a constant battle for myself. Matter of fact, I went to the fire chief, and he came in and threatened all the homeowners that he was going to put a fire sign in front of everybody's house, ordered, we were going to have to pay it at $250 apiece in front of everyone's house, a big eyesore if we didn't get it under control. So we started towing cars. Well, that doesn't make us very popular. Police have no control because it's a private street. And then the other thing is, this is going to stick out like a sore thumb in the neighborhood, you know? It just doesn't look right. I know they're trying to get, you know, dotting all the Ts and crossing, or crossing all the Ts, dotting all the Is, as Mr. Bueller always says, but there is an ordinance change that has to be done on it. And so, you know, just doing that is not good enough. I would hope that this would be turned down. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak to this issue? Seeing none? We'll close the public comment portion, bring it back to the council. By the way, I guess I ought to make mention, if anyone's listening in, when we talk about meeting all the requirements, this property is currently zoned commercial. And so in order for this project to even occur, we have to change what we originally did and zone it to something new. There have been times when people have brought projects in that were zoned properly and they met all the requirements and they were approved. That is not one of these cases. This requires a zone change. You look like you have a comment.
Yes, Mayor, I was going to add to that, that if this property was being built according to the zoning, it would never come before us. We only consider it when there's a request to change something, in this case, the zoning.
So it's in the council's possession for comments, for discussion, for motions, whatever.
I would make a motion to deny ordinance 21-48.
Second. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. The motion is before us to deny this application. Any further discussion? Councilman Hune, did you want to speak to this?
No, no, sir.
Oh.
I think that's the cursor, not the raised hand.
Oh.
There we go.
It looked like a hand.
It was a hand, but it was a phantom.
Just when I think I might have some idea of what's going on electronically, something catches me. And I don't need that. I get caught enough as it is. Okay. Thank you, Councilman Hune. Seeing no further comments, then to our city recorder for the roll call vote as required.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
No.
Motion for denial passes by majority.
That takes care of that item. Next on our agenda is Resolution 21-130.
Got it. Ordinance 21-49, Mayor.
The second one of that application.
Where am I at?
Right there.
Oh, you are correct. Yeah, they keep me on track if I get lost. Okay, then, we do have another item on our agenda, and if the council wants to address that, they can.
I would move for denial of ordinance 21-49.
Property before us, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for denial passes unanimously.
Doesn't do to vote for that one, once we've lost the other one. So now maybe I can go on, but keep track of me. Resolution 21-130, there are our auditors, as required by state law, for us to have our books audited. They have been doing our auditing for a number of years. They are a certified public accountant organization, and for the year ending June 30th, 2021, we have a proposal that they be assigned to do that. Again, the cost will end up being the same as it has in previous years, and we will actually do several different things this time. There are a couple of other items that we will add to that. So we're fortunate, it works out well. They have found our books to be very well organized and typically very few, if any, audit points to report on. So this is a proposal to accept that, to create this engagement and have them come and audit our books. With that introduction, then, to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 21-130. Second.
Property before us. Any other comments? Okay. No other comments, then to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Resolution 21-131 to approve the purchase of 11 light vehicles from Tony Davino Toyota. Is that me or?
No.
And our traditional practice is, we don't include these in the budget. We take these funds out of our one-time monies to purchase those, although we do it on an annual basis. The recession taught us that that was one of the things that if we absolutely had to, we could stop, and it was easier to do with utilizing this method. We're going back to Toyota Camrys. We had a number of hybrids, but had some difficulties with those. Wait a minute, they said they weren't hybrids in study meeting. Isn't that right? Wayne, you're still on there. Are these hybrids or not?
They are hybrids, Mayor, yes.
Oh, okay. So all 11 of them are hybrids? Okay.
I believe, I don't have the paper in front of me, as you would know, but I believe that's correct. I think all the Camrys are hybrids.
Okay. Then that's what they are. The total budget for this is $265,710. This will continue our regular rotation of vehicles in the city, and they're done under a state contract. And so I think that's everything for the introduction of that. With that, then, to the council.
I move for approval of Resolution 21-131.
Second. Sorry, second.
Okay, property before us. Just to remind everyone online and that, that these are items we've discussed in a previous council meeting. And so if we don't ask a lot of questions, it's not too unusual, but we do need to take our official action here. With that, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we'll consider Resolution 21-132 to approve the purchase of 21 light vehicles from Ken Garf Ford. This will be for a total of, not to exceed $710,000. Again, on a state contract, these will be used in public works, fire, parks, recreation, and police. So that's probably enough introduction with that. With that, to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 21-132. Second.
Property before us. With that, then, seeing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 21-133. This is to see if we will award a contract to RC Enterprise Paving and Construction. This is on a project we refer to as the Hawkeye Street Connection Project. Hawkeye Street is currently, does not go through. Two subdivisions are not connected, and this, one of these subdivisions only has one entrance to it. This has been talked about for a number of years, and this project will connect those. The land is there and does not affect a, excuse me, a home or anything. It goes through some just empty property. The cost will be $140,000, and not to exceed that. The actual cost was $130,105, and then for contingencies, up to $140. With that introduction, and this was done by bid, to the council.
I would move for approval of Resolution 21-133.
Second.
Property before us, seeing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, on our consent agenda, these are items that typically even require less discussion, whether in our study meeting or here, Resolutions 21-134, 135, 136, 137. All of these are on what we are referring to as our 4700 South Project. There will be some major work done on that street to do some repaving, and sections of that are in need, desperate need of that. We are doing it in conjunction with Kern Township, the county, because that street divides our two cities in this particular area here. Three of these are on Eaglewood Drive. These are the backyards of several homes where we'll do a real estate purchase agreement, perpetual easement, temporary construction easement for three of the properties, and the other one is over just a little further west on South Lemonwood Circle. That's the introduction to those, to the council.
Move for approval of the four items on the consent agenda. Second.
Property before us. By the way, there have been a lot of these, and we'll see more of them on the 4700 South. We've done this on 4100 South, seemed like for a long time. With that, then, to the city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now, under new business, and I will note here that this one is a little different from the other items on our agenda. It was not done in last week's study meeting, it was done in tonight's was done in tonight's study meeting due to a timing issue. It's Resolution 21-138, a contract with Oakland Construction for construction of the Utah Veterans Memorial Park. I will disclose now that I do have a conflict with this. I have been engaged in raising funds for this project outside of the city for several years. So I do have a specific interest in this, but I have been open about that with the council over the years, and they have been aware of my involvement with it. I serve as chairman of the Veterans Hall Foundation, and we've been raising funds for this project, and will continue to do so in the future as we, after we complete this first phase and move on to additional phases of this project. Certainly, the council, you're welcome to add any comments to that, or things you think the public ought to know. I've tried to be a little brief in my comments in study meeting and here due to that conflict, but the council's welcome to pitch in in any way.
Just some clarification from our meeting, the study session. So this, by passing this, the budget will stay at 1.3 million unless other funds are raised to take it up to the 1.6.
That's correct. When we put together the proposal and had the architects do a rendering, they designed it the way they wanted. They added a few more features in, and by the time we actually got the costs on it, as you know, constructions costs are going up. So if we were to do all the same things as in the original proposal, it would be 1.61 million. But we went through and identified areas where we would eliminate things so that we would stay with the 1.3 million. We will continue to fundraise, and this is only the first phase. There will be future phases of this project where we will spend additional amounts raised from the public and from other government entities, and those will be in the several million dollar range. So it's not like there won't be a lot more money spent on it. There will, but that's where we are. Did that clarify that enough for you?
Yes, thank you. I was just making sure.
But no. $1.3 million.
Which has been raised and in the bank.
The money is in the bank.
Okay.
Personally wrote some of the checks myself.
There you go.
From the foundation. So we donated those to the city for this project. That's why I have a conflict. Any further comments, any motions?
With that clarification, I would move for approval of 21-138.
Second.
Property before us, hearing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Just one further clarification, because I've mentioned my conflict. The plan has been all along, and the council's been aware of this, that this would be donated to the city. This would, is on city property. When it is completed, it will be owned by the city. They have had most of the control in the design, and so I made a few comments on it. It's sometimes hard to distinguish between when I'm serving as chairman of my foundation and the mayor, but they made sure they kept control of that, and they are the project managers of the construction. So although I played a role, this is a city-owned, will be a city-owned project. Well, with that, we do not need a closed session. That completes our agenda. We say thank you to all the people who came tonight, and especially those who made comments. I think the one individual that came and signed up may have been outside. We had a chance to talk, a gentleman that was out there and had some concerns, which he shared, and we had a good discussion, which he appreciated. So, but with that, we remind you that we will not be meeting as a city council next Tuesday. Traditionally, we meet almost every Tuesday during the year, except for a few holidays for the general election, and of course, for Neighborhood Night Out, we do not meet. Council members go out and visit various Neighborhood Watch events and participate with those, and the people are glad to have that personal interaction with them. So we will see you on August 10th, Tuesday, when we will resume our regular schedule for study meeting and our regular meeting. Motion to adjourn is proper, and without objection, we will stand adjourned.